I'm used to standing up right away, but we're not standing up yet. But I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Meeting is in order. Tammy, first thing to do, I know, I'm sorry, we're so used to standing, guys, we're gonna do one thing first and then we'll stand. Can you please do the oath of office to appoint board member Tim Most?
I will. Tim, you wanna stand? I don't know why, but we always do that. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? That you will do faithfully and impartially to the best of your ability discharge the duties of the office of board member in Winter Set Communities School District? As now and hereafter required by law? Congratulations.
Now we all stand under the pledge. But we're used to, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first up after that is conflict of interest declaration. Now's the time to declare if any of the agenda items pose a personal conflict to either any of the board.
Reading a mission statement and.
I quit. My eyeballs, you guys. Let me go back up here. Let me do that. I will do that since I failed tonight. The mission of the Winter Set Community School District is we will empower a community of lifelong learners who strive for personal excellence. Their meaningful relationships and real world authentic learning experiences. And we are on strategic priority two, integrating 21st century learning skills and student opportunities. Did I get all that correct? Sweet. Now's the time to declare conflict of interest if either of you or Gina have one. None? Perfect. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Any other changes, Mr. Gross or Kami?
Nope.
Perfect. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Emily, second by Tim. We're gonna get really good at this tonight, guys, okay? Um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm an aye, Kami, I will say aye.
Okay, and are we just gonna have Gina abstain from voting tonight?
Uh, she, Gina, are you hers?
Yes, I can.
I think you let her vote, she wants to vote, yeah.
If you would vote Gina, that'd be appreciated. There's only two and me here, so there's only three of us inside on site, so if you could vote yes, we'd approve our votes.
I, I, yeah, I vote yes.
Perfect. I am failing tonight, you guys. I better just go home. Information only consent. None? Oh my gosh.
We do have somebody that wants to.
You tell I, I mean, I wanna go home.
We do have somebody who wants to address the boards.
I have an ear infection. I had fillings done today. I am a hot mess. Ms. Karen Varley, how are you? It's, I'm normally not this bad, I promise.
Thank you very much, President McDonald. Yes, my name is Karen Varley. I'm a candidate through the Iowa House to represent District 23, which includes all of the Addison County. All of the Dare County and parts of Dallas, Union and Clark. In this race, public education is my number one priority. I want to advocate for public schools. I've seen over the last decade how our legislative priorities have failed by public schools. Including not funding schools adequately, not even keeping up with inflation. Taking public tax dollars away and giving them the unaccountable private schools. Dismanaging systems such as the APA, which are self-vehicle, student success. And just a nagging disrespect for the expertise and the judgment of our education professionals. I couldn't sit by and watch that continue. That's why I am running. I know, as all of you do, because you're already committed to public schools, that our educational system is vital. Whether we're looking at it on an individual basis or for the community's success. Whether we're thinking short term or long. So I applaud you and commend you for the work that you are doing. And I'm here tonight principally to listen to you, to find out what your concerns and issues are and to see how I can be of help. Just a little bit about me personally, I grew up on a small farm in far northeast Iowa. I graduated from Maucon High School where I gravitated toward the business program. Studying typing and torturing. And after graduation, I went to business school and became a court reporter. I did that for a couple of years and then I saved enough money to go to Iowa State and study agronomy and plant genetics. And then worked in the seed industry for a number of years, which led to an opportunity to go to law school, so I ended up an attorney. And I now practice in Stewart with my husband. We live in rural Dare County and one of the main reasons we chose to live there is so that our kids could also have great educational opportunities. Which they have, they've all four graduated and gone on to chase their dreams. So circling back, I'm here to listen to you to find out how I can help. How I can be your representative, your effective representative in the Iowa Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna slow down, I'm gonna read my agenda as I move forward. Information only, I see none.
Nothing tonight, no?
Perfect. Next up, consent agenda. We have minutes. From our regular seven, eight meeting and then our special meeting on the 26th. Any additions or corrections, does anybody saw? Okay. Paid bills and invoices.
No one contacted me with any questions, but there are a few I would just like to highlight so you know what's going on. Tim, you'll get familiar with these, you'll recognize something that are just recurring all the time. If there's a, uh, something that's a little unusual that I like to bring into your attentions. Sometimes the big ones I like to bring to your attention too. So on page two, Heartland ABK, the $520,000 bill. That includes that large part invoice, the therapeutic classroom where we're the fiscal agents, we pay the bill. And then I bill the districts that are participating. Uh, let's see, what else have we got here? There is a Lemon X bill, that's Go Guardian software for 28.9 and I did move that to Pebble, non-instructional software. So you've got that. Uh, let's see, oh, here's a big Van Monen technology in the general fund. Typically that's out of your SAVR or your Pebble, that's safety grant. And since the money's coming into 10 general fund, the expenses are going to all 10 general fund. What else did I see? I didn't really see anything else that. Oh, under Fund 91, the agency fund, you'll see three large checks going out to Creston Interstate 35 and Van Meter. Again, another program where we are the fiscal agents. And that is the TPRA, the Teacher Para Registered Apprenticeship Program. We got the funding and then I have to pass it on to the districts. So TPRA, that's all that really stuck out for me that I wanted to share, questions for me on the bills? And Tim, anytime you have a question, you can call me one-on-one and usually if you do have a question, I'll answer it. But then I also answer it to the group too, because chances are maybe somebody else has the same, just to call.
Okay.
Feel free.
Sometimes we try to stumper. It never happens. It, it, it doesn't happen. I've tried. Uh, next up, personnel report is presented there.
Yeah, because you've seen some teacher associates that are being hired, um, some, you know, hired courts replacement Zach Rankert, he start here first of August. Um, and then some late resignations from some associate positions as well. We're still in the process of trying to fill a few. Um, before the start of school year, so there'll be some coming in September, but we'll start them when school starts to bring it to you at that time, so.
Okay. Uh, next up is open enrollment. Uh, Tim, can you see that on yours? Did you? Did you find this work? Earlier, I apologize.
While you're getting that, um.
Is it Timos?
No, that's right, wait, I'll make sure you see it. Just timeline or that kind of strange where there was no timeline for open enrollment, now they've reinstated the date. Of March 15th, so the ones here had a met timeline. However, guidance from the, we've gotten is because of kind of the uncertainty, districts can decide. Um, how to handle these.
And remember how when they changed legislation and they took the timelines off, we only acted on open enrollment applications coming into Winter Set.
Okay.
Because it was only the receiving district that now there's timelines back on and now you'll have to approve all of them again. Those going out, those coming in, timelines are a little loose this year. Um, but then we'll get back on track when we go to next year for sure.
Yeah, as long, if they don't meet timeline and both boards would agree, then it can happen. But you could decide to say no too, because they haven't met timeline, so. How does that happen? Prior to the deadline, I think it was pretty common for districts to, to reject them.
It was our policy.
Yeah.
We just didn't accept late unless there was an extenuating cost, because there was a move, that's extenuating, there was harassment, there was. But on a general basis, we just declined. I mean, for planning or, you know, other things.
Sure. Cause there's.
There's seven coming in.
Five out.
But out to seven coming in, there's good cause for many of them that we would have approved anyway, even if we didn't have timelines. No move, um, lots of them are continuation after remove. There's one with a health.
Harassment or health, health issue. Health concern.
Don't want Tim to get rid of them, I think. For Maverick Young.
Um, yeah, so IEPs, if you remember, uh. Because of our numbers, right? Um, even without the, when there was no timeline, uh, we were at capacity, our teachers were at caseload. So we were denying students with IEPs just because our cases are already full.
This isn't out though, but we won't say names, no question. That's all right, but this student wants to go out and with an indicator like that on there. There's, they have accepted on the other side, so.
I just was making sure. Cause that was the one reason I thought.
You tell me what you just said again.
Uh, so the open enrollment that you have in front of you, Gina, um, with the. The removal of timelines, none of them have met timeline, however, this year the kind of advice is to, um. Districts to work it out if they want to. Because of the timeline, so the question was, uh, one of the students regarding an IEP and, and getting rid of an IEP. Um, if you remember when we were, as far as accepting students in. Because our caseloads were full, we weren't allowing them, if they were special ed, open rolled in, because our teachers' caseloads were full. So that was kind of the discussion. Did that catch you up?
Okay. Yep, perfect. Thank you.
I feel, I'm sorry for the parents, you know, first I want the timeline and there weren't any timelines and the legislature put them back in, but they weren't sure that there were timelines and it's. This year is very confusing.
Yeah, there was, um, as we predicted. Last year there were kids who were just jumping districts.
Yes.
Like when they. Get to Point One District, a lot of times, not always. It was, uh, they wouldn't show up for school, the district would go after it for truancy and they just, I'm just gonna open roll.
Yeah.
Open rolls in other districts until that district caught up with them and they just kind of jumped around that way. That wasn't, that's the one that the legislature abouts.
That as well. Sorry, Tim.
Deadlines communicated to the public.
Um, yeah, through the paper and. Yeah.
Looking that goes out early on, um, because the deadline is. That, that's really early, so we have to get it out in front of the public twice in print.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so you recommend we approve the seven in and five out.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, that's what we'll vote on when we approve the consent again. Financial report.
Financial.
Doesn't look like much.
Oh, I didn't print this one out. What? Uh, why did you pull up the statement of position? Now remember.
Only time for 24.
Uh, 24. We auditors were onsite today, auditors are gone, they're gonna finish up from their office tomorrow, so these are un-audited financials, however, they're even on. The only thing we're waiting for are two long-term debt entries on pensions and right to use a lease. And those are in a fund that aren't even represented here. So if you look over this. Um, let's see the bottom of the fund balances, if you can go up a little bit more. You can see now, this is fund balance, so this is really cash and the balance sheet. This is not the authority piece. But you can see that we came up just neck and neck on Fund 10. Remember, we had thought we would start chewing through some of our cash and. We didn't chew through a lot of it, we're right there because we had this extra cash come in this year. And you'll see that on the next page. There's a few notes, we've already discussed those notes. We're only waiting for the two entries, but these really are your financials and these are the balances I've taken then forward. We can go ahead and look at 25, but I think it's so meaningless at this point in the year. First of all, you've got negative revenues in some of those accounts because you're reversing accruals, you know, interest accruals and this and that, it's just. All of the expenses had to be pulled back and recognized in June, so the expenses aren't real. So I hate to even show you this financial and I didn't even show you one on revenues and expenses. But if we can look at the revenues and expenses as 24. You will get this document running in 25, but I don't have the line item budget down. That's what I work on in August, once the audit is pretty much done. But you can see that we did over, we exceeded our line item budget, but look further down.
Yeah.
We exceeded our revenue budget and that's why we could spend more and still not get any of our cash. We just had some other miscellaneous uses of cash that came in, you know, different brands, different funding. So that's where we're gonna end the year, we're ending the year in a really good shape. We're good on authority and I will bring you authority next month because we'll have a line item, we'll have our miscellaneous income. We'll have our special ed deficit, that's another big key in the authority piece. So we ended the year, uh, even better than we anticipated, um, but it's, everything's tightened up now and pretty much tied up with a bow on it. Questions for me on the financials?
Um, construction change order. Under contracts and agreements.
Yeah, with the Jared Schiller project, so there was change order, um, that needed to be approved, um, I believe. That project is completed, they fired it up a week ago. Um, so.
And that was due to different size opening, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, the as-built wasn't, uh, as the plan said.
They modified the as-built plan somewhere along the line.
And, uh, the whole one big enough for what we bought, so they had to come in and modify it and put it back in, so.
Okay.
Uh, DMAC Strive, uh, these are an agreement for students who attend the Strive program at DMAC, we've had it. Not every year, um, but almost every year that I've been here, we have a student since Strive. So that's the agreement with them. And then e-vision streaming agreement, um, that's with Alan Hansen, if you remember. Alan and changed, uh, the way he was running that program, he ran it through baseball softball. Uh, Nick and I met with him going into this year, that's an updated agreement for, uh, the upcoming school year. On how streaming will run, um. Other than we, he's, you can see on the appendix in there. Uh, the games and so forth that he'll cover. He also added a line about first right of refusal if somebody else wants to come in and, and also live stream, which I think makes sense, one space. Room to do that, uh, for example, uh, Atlantic had reached out at Homecoming. And wanted to come over and stream and we said we have a streaming service that, that, that runs the game, you're welcome, here's the, the link, so. That was one verbiage that was added to it and then they also expanded, if you go down to appendix A, um, what they plan to do throughout the year. So that's the updated agreement with them. Uh, juvenile justice sharing agreement.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
That one, do we get any of that? I know it's live stream, but I'm sure they've kept it as well. Do they keep the rights to those if we ever want to use those for something else? Cause there's really not anything in here on, I mean, they have intellectual property. But I mean, if we want some of that, how, how does that play currently?
So right now it's on the district's YouTube channel, the W channel, so it's all being, being streamed and stored there. Uh, as far as long-term, we haven't discussed. Um, he, they had expressed in the initial discussion, they're making the agreement at some point, going back and using it to make, um. Well, commercials, highlight reels and then.
They just know that's what's going on with some of those, those state footage, you know, big, you know, state contests, you know, competitions where. Somebody owns a Miami, you know, public broadcasting, and there's a lot of back and forth right now on. Pay-to-view things, historic footage reels of things of that nature, so I didn't know if that was something.
Yeah, we haven't got any to pay to play, uh, one thing that, um. Kind of a little bit overbought, but Huddle, which we use for volleyball, basketball, internal. Huddle is going, um, it's actually gonna cost Nick more this year. Because in order to get it from Huddle and put it on YouTube, there's a price. Otherwise they're gonna direct everybody to their own Huddle channel to watch it, um. At no cost, I said, well, I don't, how long will that be before they just start directing and you have to buy a subscription to, to Huddle to watch it, but. Um, right now to keep it on YouTube, it's a little more money to make that switch to our YouTube channel. So he, he did do that this year. But yeah, down the road, I think that's definitely something that's come up. It hasn't come up in my conversation with Alan.
Okay.
Um, anything formal yet, so. Does that answer your question or with time being?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, if it does, I mean, we can definitely discuss how I'm gonna proceed if he gets to a point where he wants to start charging for footage or right now it's just on. Um, advertising that they go out and sell. Um, like, oh, if you'll wa, if you're watching any of the softball or whatever. Um, they sold, you know, the coaches show was sponsored by Monitross, this game is being brought to you by, they were selling those ads and. And that's how they were covering their costs, so.
And they won't be taken off the YouTube channel.
Uh, no, they should stay there, yeah.
Uh, and we pay Alan nothing for all that he does.
No, well, uh, so prior years, Tim, we'd ask him for an invoice and it was mental. It was very miniscule for, for what we were getting in his cost. Um, so he approached us. Late spring, late spring for baseball softball and wanted to move to this model where they would go out and sell. Um, and retain the funds. Um, well, that's a little hard because Jared's point, um. Because it is our, our right, there's no accounting for it, there was no oversight for it, there's no agreement in place. This agreement came out of that to cover both of us. Um, that they're allowed to do that, we, uh, the other thing was. From a district perspective, being equitable, um, I couldn't say, yeah, you can go, we're gonna have you do the live broadcasts for all softball, but baseball doesn't get a. A live broadcast and they were picking and choosing what they were gonna live broadcast, does that make sense? Cause Todd, there's only one of them, there's only one of Todd, I get it. But I said, I can't endorse that we're, we're gonna do this for softball but not baseball. You run the co, company however you want, have the agreement, then, then you can decide what you're charging for that, so that's where this agreement came from. Now Alan's expenses from what he was charging us wasn't even close. I think the last two years, three, like $3,000, $3,600 rings a bell.
Something like that.
Is what we were paying for everything he did. It was super, it, it was just super cheap, yeah. So this agreement allows him to go out and sell ads, the people he's working with know that he's selling it under the W network, it's not affiliated with us. Um, just, it's basically a radio station would run. So this kind of agreement is just, yeah, allows him to do that at our events under that agreement. Does that help?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, juvenile justice sharing agreement, uh, as mentioned, this came up in, um. Was it May?
Uh, yeah.
And so the four agencies that are actually covering the agreement, you approved it in May, just bring back to approve the updated agreement with the agencies on there. Um, so that's what that's back on there for. And then the therapeutic, uh, is for Indianola, must be a new one.
Yeah.
Yes.
New student that we haven't had before.
Okay.
So.
Any questions on those contracts or agreements?
Just real quick for Tim's.
Yeah.
Benefit, you'll probably see a lot of these L A art, um, anytime, uh, the heart programs ran by the A A, like Kami said, we're the fiscal agent. So anytime that there's a new student with the school district that we haven't had before, we have to get this agreement in place, so they come out pretty regularly. If it's a, a district that we haven't had an agreement in place with before, so.
Okay, yeah. That's all I got. Okay, that is our consent agenda, entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Tim is their second.
Second.
A second.
I'm, I'm gonna give it to Emily still, Gina, but that's all right, you stay right there with us, Gina, we'll keep you in, in the loop. Uh, motion by Tim, second by Emily, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Gina?
Aye.
I will say aye as well. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Old business, second reading of, uh, board policy updates based on the 2024 legislative changes.
Yeah, so this was the long slew of them that came out of the, the last legislative session, all those updates, so it's just second reading of those. Uh, once you, you approve them, they'll go in, uh, Jane updated them on the, the website.
And there's a big slew of them.
There's usually not that many.
There, there's a big bunch with legislative change. I shouldn't say that, every legislative session, we have a big chunk afterward.
Lately, yeah, lately.
I would entertain a motion, sorry, unless anybody has any other question on those, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the policies presented due to 2024 legislative changes. Motion by Emily, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, selection of IASB legislative priorities. Did anybody bring their ideas with them? Mm-hmm. What'd you bring, Emily?
The A A for sure.
The A A?
Yeah.
Do you have numbers for us?
Oh, sorry.
I just, when Kami and I report on.
Oh, there's numbers. On one of the.
It's on the bottom.
There it is. High-quality workforce. It's in number one, the agencies are.
Yes. Okay, yeah, there is Casey, she's under number one. Is it three or four, Jared? I can never remember.
Three or four, it doesn't matter, or two if you want, or one, we take them all.
Is there anything in there about unfunded mandates?
That's always in there.
Because now with the new absentee, uh, the letters have to go out, guess what, they have to go certified mail. Unless there's been a change in that.
Oh, I actually reached out to Siobhan, cause it's in board policy and she said, yes, they're supposed to be certified. And that's 5:30 and then the postage on top of it, so it'll be six bucks a letter.
Yeah.
Over $6 a letter. I remember which unfunded mandate is.
I'm gonna send another document.
Uh, under seven, something will say there's critical components, student success, general resources. School funding policy.
Bond issues.
Unfunded mandates is there.
I'm gonna, we got two.
Yeah, so you're running a number one, which includes the A A and the number seven, which is, includes the unfunded mandates, property taxes and. I think those are the ones you're selecting and then.
And then I, I always like number five. Local control accountability. Parent family engagement. We're elected to do its best for our community, let us do it.
Those closest to the problem tend to usually have the last ideas on how to solve the problem.
So that's three then, right?
Yep.
Perfect.
So one.
One, seven and five is what I got. Is that what you guys wanted?
I thought you were saying number four.
Mental health?
No, I, yeah, that's what I was. No, no, no.
You can do four as well, that's fine, we can, we can submit four.
It'll make it on there. It'll make it on there.
It'll, it always does.
Cause mental health isn't there and what else is?
Uh, mental health and at-risk dropout.
The dropout risk number, we'd love to get that changed, but. Ever equal five percent across the state, but they won't. There's never an attraction, but.
Sure, we can definitely, if the board wants you, we can definitely put four.
I put it on there. Let's do one, four, five, seven. Do you want a motion for that, Kami?
Needs to be, yeah.
I would entertain a motion to ex- uh, to submit our priorities, one, four, five and seven to I A S B. Their second. Motion by Emily, second by Tim, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five board governance plan.
Yeah, so this is, I used to see before, it's kind of a general overview of what we'll cover each month. Other things do come up, but these are things that we try to. To plug in and you know when they're coming. Actually spent some time this summer and laid out the last three years. Of board agendas and tried to correlate where things fell. So this is kind of what I've got on the docket. Uh, with regards to governance for us going forward for this year.
Thank you.
Looks good to me. So you got FFA out of state travel put in there. I like it. Any questions on that governance plan? Now, enter- entertain a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five board governance plan. Motion by Tim, is there a second? Second by Emily, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next one, we have to do. The S B O search for search process. End timeline.
Yeah, so I just, I have no idea how the board wants to move forward. Obviously, this is an important hire. Um, uh, Trent Brennemeyer, Brennemeyer Leadership Services. They ran the search when when I was hired. They also assisted with Cam Smith's. You remember that? They ran the high schools, uh, principal search for us. They do S B Os, um, he did send a proposal. Um, get a chance to look at it. There's two ways you can go about it. They run the entire thing. Um, which, I can't quote that number right at the top of my head here.
Option one, twenty-five hundred.
Uh, that's where they run it and we take over. The other ones where they. Run the entire thing.
Which is the seventy-seven?
I run the entire thing.
They would do all the inter- well, they were facility interviews with. Justin and other people. I mean, it wouldn't just be just them.
And then you interview. They'll narrow it down and then.
So, like the way we did Justin's when we did it, it was, it was all us, but it was, you know, they did all the background checks. They brought us. We got all of them and then they said, we think that this is the top ten. Look at them. Who do you want to pair off? We got it down to interview of top four, I think, or whatever it was.
I think he did two interviews of six and then you.
That's right, then we brought it down to three, yeah. And then we met in person with three. And then it was our decision, same, very similar with how we handled Cam's was.
Yeah, heavily involved all the whole way on candidates, but then they kind of brought candidates, they. All the times have background information on on candidates that they've had in other pools or things like that. They bring questions that they've used, sometimes beneficial in in other hires. It's just what the board would prefer to do. This is probably how the board's more involved than 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 others somewhat too, with the S B O, is on what closely they work with you as well. Um, so we run it, where we run it, we post it. Um, uh, we could do the option one where the marketing and recruiting, so they do with all the upfront marketing, they get you to your candidates and then when we interview, it's all on us. So we set up the schedule onsite, we would do the the questions, uh, all of that. We would do all that ourselves here, um, set up committees, those kinds of things. Um, that's the twenty-five hundred. The seventy, uh, the other one is they run it all the way through, even up to negotiating with the. Uh, the candidate. So it's really just, we have some time, but you know, guidance from how the board would like to proceed.
I always do this. I always kick it back to you and say, how much, wha- what's your comfortability with it, Justin? What do you want? Do you want to run it all yourself with us, or would you rather defer some with Trent? Like, cause that's how we kind of got with, to with Cam was.
You know, Cam's hired the timing, right? It's it's in the spring of the year, there's a lot of hiring going on that I'm involved in this. If you look at Trent's, I guess, trying to have somebody in place by December or January, when I talk to him. Uh, it wouldn't be as, um, taxing on me to do it in the fall as it would be in the spring. Based on a normal, a normal year and workflow, just really what the board would like to see. I ran, ran for some of our administrators and you, I mean, very similar process. We ran with Cam, I think we got a good hires both ways. It's just your comfort level as a board. Um, pools are not great. Trent will tell you that. He goes, the S B O pools are not very deep.
It said six tall candidates. Is this specific to S B Os or is this specific to just the information or just?
Uh, S B Os, I think is what we.
And you may end up hiring someone like when you hired me. I was not an S B O. I had the accounting background. You, I mean, there are. There are requirements by the state set out for this position and an accounting degree or the accounting minor is required. Um, but you may find somebody in the community that has the accounting background, but no school business. And there's, you know, there's good training for that, but you don't get that until, I mean, you won't reap the benefits of that training and that comfort. Until like you're. Three or four, but you might have somebody that stays longer term than than an S B O coming from a smaller district, working their way up to a metro school.
I mean. We have access to things too, that Trent's using as well. The Donovan Group works with Grunmeyers and works for us, right? So a lot of the marketing, we would use the same thing. We'd run that through them. The announcement at the end, the Donovan Group would put together for us. So we do have some tools in place. It's just the comfort level of the board.
You see like a, like a LinkedIn thing where people. Actually get. And have their resumes on file. They're looking to move.
It shows.
Yeah, he'll, he'll post it on LinkedIn. Yeah, Tim, he will. He also, he uses, um. The same system we do is called frontline, um, recruiting and hiring. So if you apply with him, it comes through that. Um, when it was Cam, he just gave me access to, I mean, to their. So the cameras come in, so I saw as they were coming in and could add notes on to it, uh, right along with them as you were screening candidates. Yeah, he'll have some that have applied for the jobs before. Um, if they're not hired or if he may know somebody's looking, but. If somebody wants to move, they, I mean, and we post the job, they'll hopefully see it. We push it out on social media like. You saw we did for Corks Hire here, you know, we put something like that out, we put it out on Iowa Works. Um, it's really. It's an important hire. Where's the board want to be? Yeah, I could, I feel confident I could run it. If you want to have somebody else do it and who's done it before, um, fullest closure, never hired one before. S B O, yes, I haven't had to do that. It's one position I haven't hired for, but.
So with that being said, is there, I mean, I'm sure it's a ta- different tailor pilot style of question than what we do when we do our. Administration staff, things of that nature. Would you feel comfortable reaching out to your. Your group, I mean, to one of your other administrators that has hired to see what kind of questions they've used for hiring.
I would, I would reach out for them and see if they've hired and got, um. A question they've got as well.
Cause discipline a teacher doesn't.
And I told Kami too, obviously, um, her input in this process is gonna be vital. You know, and who she feels if, um. And she'll know what kind of questions we should ask as well, I would all have to think, um, around that. I don't know that we need the full seventy-seven hundred. Would it be good to help on the front of the twenty-five hundred? Maybe.
That's what I'm only thinking, the only really benefit he brings is that marketing, I mean, the the connection piece, if he has something out, really, that's about it. I think the rest of it. Uncomfortable you doing.
You sat through how I run the process with committees and teams and schedule and letters and.
Which is exactly how he does it.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, I feel very comfortable running something onsite. Is it worth maybe having his on some of the background and getting some of the questions? Yeah. He, he just can do some legwork that I would have to do. Does that make sense?
I'm not opposed to the the marketing that up front. Piece, the twenty-five hundred. Emily?
I'm on the same page. I'm thinking too, so is the S B O, is it like a. Endorsement, like, what is it that?
You're licensed by the state. Yeah, I do have to have a license. So you can get somebody in on an initial as they're getting their license.
They have one year? Is it two years?
Like a conditional B license, is that?
It's not like a T. There's no B level or, but yeah, you can get an initial. Until you get your training done.
It's a, is it still the, like, the two years, so you gotta go to the school, the?
The school has moved to away from Iowa State. Iowa State used to have the business academy. And now it's part of I A S O.
Oh, okay.
It's got a funny name, like it'd be or something.
I think I need to be able to fund source, like, it's the, uh, there's a weird, yeah. Sorry, we usually do better about this. I remember Malcolm, like, the first one thing goes, okay, you guys have got to stop using the acronyms.
For a long time, I wrote them out on my board. I'll say, I'll write them out.
I association of school business officials. As well, I I A S B, I association of school boards.
Usually I would Google that, type it in.
So I, I mean, Gina, do you have any input on that? Are you, I mean, you want to do whole package or just the marketing recruiting? What are your thoughts?
I feel like Justin is quite capable of doing the major part of this task. I feel like the. Dollars we saved would be better upfront. I just think the twenty-five hundred dollars, them getting us started. Yet, if we get into a bind and don't have candidates, can we call them in? In three months, or if we haven't met the deadlines that they've kind of set up, can we call them in?
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure he would. If we get into it, he like, we want you to finish the process, I'm sure he would. For the cost he's quoted.
He's not gonna turn down the work at the end.
Five grand is gonna be like, the difference, like, what is that worth?
Their travel time, yeah.
Yeah, it's their travel time.
I will do my best to get the word out. Get that. Yes, there's some interest.
So I'm hearing there's. Initial thought of going with the marketing recruiting piece, option one of the two thousand five hundred dollars for the S B O process. If that is. What you all hear as well, I would entertain a motion on that. Motion by Emily, is there a second? Second by Tim, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Gina, are you an I?
I am an I, sorry.
I'm an I as well. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Next up, annual review of emergency operations plan.
Uh, yeah, so every year, uh, it's required that you review the emergency operations plan. Um, this year, we did do a more thorough. Uh, going through the. We did, we we updated a lot. We also added in the S R O. With the addition of the S R, we went back in and wrote. Him into the different policies throughout, so, uh, went through it pretty extensively with our admin team, uh, Chief Pittman. Uh, Officer Garrison was at the table. And so, yeah, this would be the update, um, I asked you to approve it and we'll get them, uh, distributed to all staff.
Any major structural changes besides S R, I mean, we don't see, I mean, I just see S R O added in places that I don't remember seeing it really.
Nothing substantial really, um, we just went through, added that back in. We did incorporate, um. In the office, we have the radios.
Oh, okay, yep.
That, that's one of the first steps we do is we make sure and get that, um, that office, the button push in the office to alert law enforcement. If you remember, I talked, I shared some of my notes from when Perry presented the A A. They said that. That was probably the best thing they really got. Within seven minutes, they had a huge. Uh, influx of law enforcement because of that radio. So we wrote those, tried to include that where it made sense to as well.
Do we press the first year for an S R?
Yes.
We have any community blowback reporting of officer in schools?
I've heard none. Put it out in the, it was in the beacon, um, I did my four by four today and again, it's on the website, um, tried to get it out.
Is he gonna be floating around during family engagement night?
He'll be around, yeah. I think he's first days, uh, the sixteenth, I think, is when he starts with us. Or maybe, no, Thursday, he'll be here for, cause he's gonna be here for the Alice update as well. Yeah, I've heard nothing, Tim, so far.
Emily?
I think every building's got it built into pre-service to get him in front of kids too and so forth.
Okay, any other discussion on the review of the emergency operations plan? If not, then entertain a motion to approve it as presented. Motion by Tim, is there a second? Second by Emily, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is review of annual appointments that are required by the board.
Yeah, it's kind of an odd, like, this is supposed to happen to your annual meeting. However, your annual meeting doesn't happen until December. And these people are in all of our publications, so I've just included it in August and if. We can bring it back at that time, but, uh, it just lays out who your, uh, abuse investigators are, equity coordinator, all these are are required appointments by the board. So that's what you have. It's just, um, we'll prove it now and. Supposed to be at your annual meeting, but it doesn't make any sense to me when you're halfway through the year.
I don't see any new or different names or things on there, so. I didn't entertain a motion to approve the annual appointments as presented. Is there a second? Bush family, second by Tim, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Excuse me, next up is the facility master planning emergent proposal.
Yeah, so, um, little background, uh, Nick Hildebrandt and, uh, Nick Nugent are two names that Jared probably remembers. They're originally with Structure Architect, who was the architect firm that you started working with, uh, for the last remodel. And then when we were bought out by I S G, um, Nick left and it started to merge. And I worked with Nick when I was in, um. Nevada as well on a project, um, so anyway, um, this is one proposal. If the board wants me to seek other proposals, I will. Um, but in conversations here, as of late, some things have come up is is areas of need. Some of them were from the last bond issue, so the auditorium, uh, was something that was on the last bond, but there was enough capacity, so. It was removed. Um, we talked about lighting, I think, is it last month or the, maybe in July? Or, um, those, they're still there, um, so that area needs to be, um. Remodeled, looked at. The C T area didn't get touched, um, during the last remodel, so there's some cosmetic things that need to be done in there. Some air handling in the shop. Um, girls wrestling has been added, you know, right now they're floating, you know, they're, they're being asked to move around. They're actually looking for. An offsite place to wrestle. So those are the things that have come up, uh, and, um. As potential needs. I shared with you, we had, we met with, uh. Travis from Piper Sandler, just be Piper Jeffrey, no, it's Piper Sandler. Yeah, um, and he reviewed our bonding capacity, um, both general obligation bond and save bond. Um, there's a fairly substantial. Uh, amount that you could do through save. And you have obligations on save that now go into like twenty twenty-six, uh, that'll fall off. So you could actually just kind of pick up what you've had an obligation, keep it going forward to save, or. If the board decide you could look at a general obligation bond, um, because some of that's gonna fall off in twenty twenty-eight as well. Um, it, the move would gen- would probably be a levy neutral move. But grand scheme of things, I think, developing a master plan with somebody, strategic master plan about how things could be addressed. Kami and I have talked about roofs, you've addressed that. Uh, we talked about heating and cooling at the junior high, those individual units, um, they would come through. Did I say the middle school?
Middle school, the individual units? You said junior high.
Sorry, middle school, um, as individual units that we. Sorry, middle school, um, as individual units that we know are coming and we, we may have to replace. They would go through a process to kind of lay out, like, what are your emergent needs, those kinds of things. I asked them for a proposal. Uh, you can also go with, um, ISB uses, uh, ICAP, uh, and Estes Construction will do something very similar. If you wanted me to reach out to them, I could reach out with a proposal, but it's just to start this conversation. Honestly, Nick's timeframe is probably a little aggressive. I mean, honestly, I would think starting something maybe second half of this year. And I look at it, I think, like twenty twenty-six or beyond, but we probably need to start the process of gathering information for the projects that, that could be out there. We've been addressing some needs at the bus bar as they've come up, you know, that's an old building, needs some structural repair this year. Does it make sense to look at something in that building as well, long term? So that will be the thing, is they would do a kind of a comprehensive look at things and come up with a, a facility master plan. It's one proposal, so. I just I know there's a matter with Nick and I had to meet with Nick, so we saw him out with him. Thoughts, questions?
Uh, it's on the third document there, about halfway down, the proposal.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What do you see as the most pressing of those? Issues that we have to, I've been in the building for years.
I think auditorium.
Yeah.
I mean, with the lighting and the sound and the seating in there, it's just, um, it was something that was on the last and, and wasn't addressed. Um, the current tech building, uh, it's, um, it just hasn't been addressed. It doesn't, it stands out compared to the buildings, everything else got a facelift, got remodeled, you know, got some. So that would be good. My very, my initial initial walk around the building with Nick, um, family consumer science is a nice space, but it is so far away from the rest of that.
It's probably the southwest.
Yeah, very southeast.
Southeast.
Yeah, tucked on the back of the band and chorus, way back in the corner there, um. Would it make sense to move that up to what the other? Reconfigure the tech building, put it there and put girls wrestling. Girls wrestling came out, I, I mean, to need, we added it, um, they've been very good to work with, but they're getting pushed, I mean, they were in the shed last year, Tim, and if you knew that, had roller mats, had roller mats up every night, and then we moved with the junior high up above the, or the junior practices and Penrod behind there. Not great, um. And now they're looking for something outside this more permanent, they'll take stuff up or down, um. So that's, that's a pressing need, I would say, for them to have a place, um.
And they have to roll their mats up in the shed, why?
Cause other people are running it. Or not running it, but signed up to use it during that time of year. Um, cause they'll start working for baseball, softball, start going in there, you know, for offseason workouts after Christmas. Um, and it's so that was why they're rolling them up and down, um. Yeah. So just something's come up, that, that we need to try and address and find a space for. But this would be the planning, this would be getting to a plan and those kind of things, so. Would you like?
Put it on my I A S B hat, I mean, we have I cat. I, I mean, I, I think it'd be nice just to see what their proposal fee would be. Just to com- compare.
Absolutely, we've got time. I just wanted to start the conversation.
I mean, that, that price that they have on there, I, I don't know, I mean, at sixteen, is that high, is that? Sixteen ninety, I don't know.
And so, when I went through, um, right before I left my previous district, we were, we had worked with them and what they do is they brought in, they got you the, kind of the grand scope of the project, they bring architects to you, um. And they, they, like, you interview them.
Now, we, that's, I remember the process very, very, not very vividly, very little hazy when I first came on, was when we first did that with the last bond issue.
Oh.
We used, um, did IG, did they do the whole thing, start to finish? I thought we, somebody else?
We interviewed more than just.
Yeah, cause I think we went through a difference, somebody else gave us kind of the master planning process, we got the bond, uh, uh, built, how much we could spend. And then we hired a firm.
Well, our bonding capacity came from Travis.
Yeah, yeah, but we kind of did some of that on our own upfront. Yeah, and then we, then we interviewed several, or talked to several different groups.
So I can't would do that.
I just, I think it might be just, you know, I have nothing against, or, you know.
No, that's fine.
Those guys, I just would like maybe see a comparable.
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
Okay.
We've got time, we've got plenty of time.
We've got time, it's just.
Do they have like a rough estimate of what reimbursables would be, the mileage?
Uh, it's down below, um, it's like a percentage, isn't it?
Oh, it is?
Or right there, sorry, I clicked out of it. It says right there that it'd be minimal. Um, I know I read it.
Phase one.
Reimbursables, these are expected to be minimal for the master plan.
Usually it's just their.
Mileage and if they have to stay overnight, cause they're gonna repeat their balls, so if they have to get hometown.
Teen postage, plan review fees.
Yeah, yeah, just, okay.
I just know that what we deal was, uh, funds thirty-three, the save, uh, global option sales tax and thirty-sixth of the Pabel, which is both, that's
Physical plant equipment.
To kind of put the big pieces in the five year first, and then you can pick up the things that come up unexpected, but having that vision down the road of what those big cost items are gonna be, I think it's just.
I think it's a great plan, I think, I think it's a great thing to do, but just.
Absolutely, happy to reach out. I'll reach out to Icat, uh, ISB or Icat and Estes runs it, I've worked with them before, ask them for proposal.
And they're not pushy, I mean, that's, we hear, you know, they come and talk, and I've talked to other people that have used it, you know, they're not pounding you to use them as just your soul. They're happy to send you out to different architects and construction.
Well, ISB's got a relationship with them, I think saves you a little bit on the front end.
It does, you know, for their projects, so.
Absolutely, I'll reach out to them.
Okay, so we're just gonna leave that one on the floor, Kami, if that works, just kind of table, chill.
Yeah.
No action, okay? Everybody good with that?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Okay, yeah, we've got some time, just, we need to start probably laying out a plan for how we're gonna address some of these needs.
Um, approve, activity fundraiser, all I have is competition cheer, family engagement night.
Yeah, like.
I stuck that on because of the email.
Uh, we, fundraisers come in September. Um, where are they selling?
They're gonna do something during family engagement night.
Cats, bows, I'm, I'm trying to do sign language, pick over here, bows, they're gonna sell bows.
At the middle school?
Nick sent it to me, he said, Ken, they said, yeah, just put it on the September one, and Cam was like, well, let's throw the August ones through. Um, so that's why, yeah.
At all of the schools, at one school, or are we thinking? Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
I would entertain a motion to approve that, if somebody would like to make that.
Second, or some.
I'll say it.
Much rather looks like, like, Tim, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's get, say we went, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh.
I'm sorry, motion and second by, all right, Emily and Tim.
We went this way this time, left, right, left, left, right, right.
I'm trying to go.
I'm like, did you hear the voting?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, next up is board member reports, this is the time, Tim, where we kind of just go through, everybody has anything? I'm gonna start this way this time, do you have anything? Uh, Mama G, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, um, Gina and I did go down to the Orient Maxberg meeting, uh, back on, I don't remember when that was, the twenty-fifth, I believe, something like that, July twenty-fifth, and kind of, uh, gave a little bit of information as to why we were rejecting that plan, um, that they presented with that map, um, not including several uh, groups and areas of Madison County, coming to Winterset Community District, wanting them to go to Notaway Valley. Um, we were there with the attorney representation from Nicole's her name.
Yeah, Dickinson.
Dickinson, um, with Creston, with Darren Stender, their board president, Galen, and their transportation director. Uh, and they were to, uh, denying or not liking it as well. Um, so I did get up and speak on behalf of the district and just talked about, you know, the people that were in Maxburg that were excited to be, just, you know, members here, they've opened enrolled here. They like the same piece that their tax dollars would stay in the same county that they reside in, instead of going to a, a school district outside. They know fully that they can still open and roll. A little heated in that gym, not only just hot, because it was a hot day in a non-air-conditioned gym, nor in Maxburg. Um, but there was a lot of animosity. I did have a good chat with one of the commission members afterwards, um, looking at data. Um, that some of their information they were using, uh, may not have been up to date and most current. Uh, so I provided them with the information that I was provided by Kami about some of our open enrollment locations. They had, um, some kids residing at different addresses than maybe where they are actually residing. So I was able to help point that out on their map. Um, they thought that they were giving us a lot of students, but really they were in different locations, so, um, I don't know if that makes any movement or not, but that does put them out, uh, this calendar year and next calendar year. They cannot make any change within the next two actual fiscal calendar, school years. They are reconvening, they can present a modified map, they can present the same map, or they can scrap it all now and possibly go to consolidation. Um, just complete total move over to Notaway, you know, consolidate with Notaway Valley, so they have some other options. But no options are gonna be done within the next.
So they won't go negative on authority, they wanted.
They, they, they've been speaking with state op, yes, they've been, they, they're well aware of their problems with that.
So all that to avoid the, whatever they were trying to avoid to quickly bring this out to.
They, they made mention, a lot of times they were calling it reorganization by dissolution. So is what they were trying to do, that's why they were trying to keep it at that, under that ninety-five percent of property and asset going to one district, it was like ninety-four point seven was going to Notaway Valley, and then us and Creston were getting pieces of it. Yeah, so, um, it, it is kind of on standstill now, the committee can reform, or they're reforming, they'll do a new proposal and make, like I said, maybe the exact same map, maybe a different map. They may put a pin in that altogether and, um, and consolidate, um, but no matter what, everything, both of those options, I believe, have to go to the electorate as well, don't they? It has to go to the constituents either proposal. Um, they could.
They can do that now even though they're gonna go negative and they'll budget next year?
As far as I know, yes. It, there's a lot of gray areas and how this is all handled by the states and the laws, I'm looking to do, um, Representative Sorenson and Senator Sinclair were both there. Um, I think the state is really watching it, because I think they do think this is something that we're going to see. Um, in some more rural, small districts across the state and how it actually works in practice, instead of just by what they say on paper, how you go about doing this, um, a lot of interpretation, um, but again, it's, we're kind of in a holding pattern until end of this month.
I, yeah, so I sent Nicole's email to you, and it was something that the auditor brought up, that they weren't gonna make timelines for some reason.
The county auditor, yes, they can't meet the timelines to get the the correct amount of days, weeks, months, whatever, before it's published and
Right.
The review pro, all of that, they, they, they weren't gonna meet all of those.
So that put them out to March twenty-fifth, and you can't do that for the year.
Year.
The upcoming year, it's gotta be a whole.
Gotta be a whole year out, which is what they were trying to do already.
Mars, so I think their plans to go to a vote in Mars, but it won't go into effect.
Until the end of the next school year.
July twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. So no matter what, in Orient Max, as of right now, as of that meeting on the twenty-fifth, it sounds like Orient Maxburg will still function this year, and then again, twenty-five, twenty-sixth.
That's why I'm triggered.
In some capacity.
And to Kami's point, their fear, their hope of getting it done was that they don't have.
They don't have to go into that.
Operating, yeah. Revenue to do.
And they did say that they, they're looking at that, they're looking at what they can do to mitigate that and, and be, you know, respectful of that. There were a lot of, um, Madison County residents, landowners down there that were in support of joining Winterset Community School District. Um, there were several of them that I was a little caught off guard, like, oh, they do like us. You know, you're, you kind of never know how people feel about you, but, um, several of them wrote letters. And, uh, we had two open enrolled parents speak, um, and said, uh, it put, put out there why they wanted their kids to come here and not to Notaway Valley, and nothing against Notaway Valley, just, you know, they've been involved in Winterset, they've opened and rolled, and they were just hoping to, you know, be in Maxburg and now be part of, of Winterset, so. Otherwise, school starts a week from Friday, so excited. I have a paper chain going at home. Kids back to school and out of my house. I get one hour lunch breaks in peace again.
Listen, do masters, I know what I.
I know, I know. Anything for our next board member? Welcome aboard, I'll be with you afterwards, we'll get that squared away.
Sounds good.
Gina, anything from you in Texas?
She said no.
Oh, she said no. I'm like, she already said no.
So let's make sure. Um, seventh ISB convention is, uh, is, registration is open November twenty through twenty-second. Uh, we've got some time, but if you want to register, let us know, I'll, I'll bring it back, uh, probably in September and so forth. Uh, so I gave you some things, uh, got notification today that the Boys and Girls Union met, the two boards met. They're moving boys golf and girls tennis to the fall, starting in twenty-five, twenty-six. It's been talked about for a while. Forays ran fall golf forever.
Yeah.
Um, it will, uh, alleviate some of the congestion in the spring. It will also, there'll be some growing pains, I just don't know whether it'll be, it's gonna put some kids in some football golf competition.
Yeah.
Um, we have one individual that I know that's a good golfer, um, will also probably be, uh, one of our starting football players in a pretty key position that's gonna have to make a decision a, a year from now. So it can be tough, but, uh, again, it's, we'll get through it, I don't worry about it, um.
We still have the dual athlete.
Dual athletics, yeah, they'll be, we, I talked to Nick today about that too, what to think about that, we allow it in the spring. We'd have to try and probably make it work in the fall. Our part of that is, um, there's no lights on the golf course. And football practice is typically right after school. It's just, there's some logistics that are ten versus.
I think it would cross country for a couple of kids.
Yeah.
So it can happen.
We can, absolutely.
You can run on your own, you play golf on your own.
Yeah.
They run a football team, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, things have to work through, yeah, let's work through that, um. Ancient generation, I shared that resource with you, if you haven't read the book, research is on there, it's a Cliff Notes version, uh, of kind of why, you know, the claims, and you'll see the graphs that he uses in the book, um. Cam shared an article with us recently about districts who've gone down this path, I think some good guidance about listening to your constituents, get good policies and things in place before you make the switch. Some of these schools just pulled the plug this summer. I don't know if they've got those in place, but they're, they're gonna do it. Uh, our plan is start the conversation this fall. Hopefully we can make a decision by maybe second semester on what we wanna go forward.
I think it's a great idea.
Um, I know Corin, I've talked about already bringing up at Saac, talked to the Optimus, it's in the four by four video that'll go out this week that'll kind of allude to those things, so we'll start that conversation. Um, yeah, and, and see what kind of our community brings up and try and get something developed to put in place. Uh, Senate File four ninety-six, the gift that keeps on giving.
Sunday's gonna stop, right?
Yeah, so all are set on a client alert today, so Senate File forty-six was the bill that banned, um, library books in college, a bunch of stir, um, in curriculum and also, um, uh, surveys and all kinds of things. There was an injunction put in place in December uh, last year, that's just made it null and void. Well, we got a notification today that that injunction's been lifted. Uh, at the time that I was typing this up, I hadn't talked to Miriam, Miriam got back to me, so I just really quick printed her response and gave it to you. Uh, you can read it, but essentially she said, it's uh, August thirtieth would be the day it would go into effect, twenty-one days from the day of the, she said there could, the other side could now, um, appeal or challenge, and it could be back in place. I sent emails to our administration, said, we know the books we pulled before, we know what, if this happens, we'll just pull them at that time. Otherwise, we're, we'll just kind of operate as is, so that's kind of what it says.
Okay.
Um, head softball coach, I'm sure you're aware that Coach Corcoran has decided to retire, um, pretty big shoes to fill. Um, that job was posted, uh, statewide on Friday, I, Nick plans to let run for a couple of weeks, trying to conduct interviews, he reached out to all the softball players, got some feedback, um, he would like to have something in place, I think, by first of September. Um, cause of course, you know, they started running some, uh, pitching stuff on Saturdays and October already. And I, I think that's where our family will, family will be asking for. Family Engagement Night, Tuesday the twentieth, forty-eight, each village is running a slightly different play based on these other students, um, we are planning to have hot dogs and having some fun activities at the football stadium beginning around six. Uh, but this was planned to the district before I got here, um, right before COVID. Having got back to it, um, Josh, a lot of kudos to Josh and our admin team, kind of spearheading this and wanting this to go, so, um, hot dogs at six o'clock for families, and a color run to follow at seven, so it should be a, a fun night, I think there's a rock, rock wall coming, uh, some inflatables, all that fun stuff, so. Uh, and last but not least, the athletic, sorry, yeah.
So if a staff member has kids in the district or in schools, do they get to leave and then come back?
Yes, we try to work with them.
Okay.
We do, yeah, we try to make it so they can go to meetings if they have to.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Not all, I mean, we do, we try to allow them to go dug a lot of them, be at the element for so long, and if they have to go to the middle school or high school for that, they'll go to those, so we do try and, try and work with them.
Sneaks.
Uh, and then Athletic Department, I kind of alluded to this in the board debate, I've heard nothing, going out there for discussion. Um, the cost for trainers gone up substantial. I shared how the other RRCs are, are operating it. I'd like to go for this year and split the costs with them on it. Um, to help a little bit. To help a little bit.
Do we have to approve?
Um, so, yeah.
They'll approve the bills when they come.
It was.
Yeah, it's just would be a change, you know.
Because he's been absorbing the cost solely through the activities.
He was, and back when it was through, um,
Millennium.
They're at Millennium, yeah. It was about seven grand.
Right, now it's up to.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Um, gosh, what is his name? Peak, is it Peak Performance?
It's out of.
I think Peak Performance is the organization. He's actually out of like Omaha Council Bluffs, but has an office in Stewart.
Stewart, that's right. I was thinking Waukees, but that's not right, yeah.
Trainers.
It's a big network of trainers.
He is.
We have different ones for different sports.
Primarily serve our district that I've seen. Um, the feedback is that they've been good, you know, they've been good. Um, but it's.
Lord of life on.
You know, raising ticket prices because of increased costs. This is one area that we can, we can help a bit. Um, so, yeah. That's what I got. Questions for me?
No. Okay. Next board meeting is September ninth. Same time, same place. Nothing else? We are adjourned. Thanks Gina, enjoy Texas.
See you Gina.
Thank you.
Thanks Gina.
Bye.